I'd like to call to order the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Brooklyn City's Board of Education regular meeting. Mrs. A., can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Here.
Ms. Crowell.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Slattery.
Here.
Ms. Farja.
Here. Can we stand for the pledge, please? I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the test. In order for the board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of thirty minutes of public participation as it pertains to school-related topics will be permitted at each meeting. Each person wishing to speak to address the board will approach the podium, state his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person will be allowed at three minutes until the total time of thirty minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board. Do we have anyone wishing to speak tonight? Okay. Now on to our superintendent's report.
Bobby, this is good? Good? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Want to take a little bit of time today to kind of review what we did, what we presented last meeting in terms of some capital improvements and some levy cycle planning information. Just want to think a little bit more clarity would be appropriate. Also, we've had a lot of winter commendations since we met last time, so I want to take a little bit of time to celebrate some of the successes that we've had in the district. First of all, congratulations to our winner, student athletes. It's been a great season. Kids did well, kids participated. A lot of our seniors, you know, obviously, last time they're going to be on the mat and on the court and on the ice. So, want to congratulate all of our winner, student athletes. Very quickly, the award ceremony for winter sports is this coming Monday, so looking forward to seeing them there. Congratulations to the cast of Matilda this past weekend. Kids did an amazing job. We had a wide variety of kids participating in the musical. And so, as always, the show was amazing. And want to congratulate all of our, both of our intermediate, middle school and high school students. And kudos to Mr. Casper, Mr. Sullivan and Mrs. Cipriani for putting on a great play, great musical. Little news with some of our younger students in the district and kind of kudos also to City of Brooklyn for their, for the participation and organization of the youth camps and youth sports this winter. We had our fifth and sixth graders here at Brooklyn were in, Brooklyn runs the recreation program, and they were our fifth and sixth grade champs this year. Myself, Mr. Becker, Mr. Neal, Coach Neal, Coach Shepard, we're able to see those games this past Saturday. So, congratulations to our fifth and sixth grade champs. And then on the other court, on the other, at the fieldhouse, our third and fourth graders were participating, were playing in the championship game. They came up a little bit short against Fairview, but also congratulations to them. So, the future looks bright for our upcoming middle school and high school teams. So, congratulations to both of those teams. Back in February, which seems like five snow days ago, many, many. Coach Tim McFarland was honored by the Ohio High School Football Coaches Association at a banquet in Columbus. Really, and everybody, to remind, you know, Tim did a great job with our kids this year. First playoff appearance in Brooklyn history. Tim kind of took over under some difficult conditions and just kind of went with it and went in stride. And so, thanks to Tim and congratulations to Tim and everything he's done. And Mr. Becker reports, we've had a lot of kids in the weight room and participate, so very excited for this spring and this summer for them. We had some, we have our middle schoolers, our seventh and eighth graders qualified for Power of the Pen Regional Qualifiers. We're hoping to get some good news that those students will be on to states. I was here this, it was actually the same day of the basketball, youth basketball games, and I happened to be walking by the room and they're there with Mrs. Mack, you know, virtually doing what they need to do. So, congratulations to those kids and hopefully they move on to states. One of our alum, Julia Wall, she's been honored as a USA volleyball women's national team. So, always good to see our former grads participating and succeeding outside of Brooklyn. So, kudos to Julia. She was also nominated for Female Athlete of the Year. I can't tell you what organization it slips my mind, but she's, she was in that arena. So, congratulations to Julia. We had Jenna Young place third in the indoor state championship for high jump. She jumped, she jumped five foot, five feet, four inches. So, congratulations to Jenna. She placed second or third last year at the state tournament. Was it third, second, third? So, we're excited for Jenna as a junior for this, this spring. Way back in January, February, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Black took some kids to North Ridgeville for the O M E A competition. So, I was happy to go out there and see the kids perform. And this is a rating competition and they were rated superior and excellent. So, congratulations and kudos to those students. This afternoon, myself and Mr. Hare were lucky enough to go to Strongsville Middle School to see the Polaris Palooza Robotics Competition. Middle schools from all, all six Polaris schools competed, robotics teams. And Mr. Goodwin was there, did a great job. Our kids competed. I think there were four or five different activities. I think we rated it, ranked as high as fourth in one of the competitions. So, very excited. I think it's our turn next year, Brooklyn, to host, so we're hoping to have that here next year. So, very excited and congratulations to Mr. Goodwin and the kids for a great job. And this past Sunday, we had students that were honored and showcased down at Case Western Reserve Youth Art Show. And so, wasn't able to go on Sunday, but you can see we had kids range from primary grades up through middle school in terms of their honoring. And so, you know, the arts is alive and well in Brooklyn and kudos to Mrs. Becker and Mrs. Lowell for doing an amazing job with those kids. And last thank you to City of Brooklyn. This has been a really busy weather winter for us. It was, you know, we hit December and really nothing, but once we hit January, it was, it was full go. I don't think we had a five-day week between snow days and holidays for almost four or five weeks. So, kudos to John Verba Service Department for always being open to communication, working with me, giving us updates in terms of sidewalks and things like that. So, kudos to Service Department of Brooklyn for really helping us and working us through the winter. And also, kudos to Jack Aburuzi. Jack's done an amazing job with the youth sports. He's involved, Mr. Becker, from the beginning. That's what it's all about. We, him and I are working together for the summer enrichment camp. Right now, we already have over thirty of our students from Brooklyn School that have signed up for the summer camp in which we'll be able to help them with scholarships to attend all summer or part of the summer. So, very excited for that. But again, kudos to Jack and to John, Service Department and the Rec Department for just being partners in terms of working with our kids. And the last kind of kudos and welcome. Let's, yeah, right, I mean, yeah. Rob and I did ask for a better picture. I just want you to know, I did. I asked for a bit. So, but I want to welcome Mr. Dave Wallace. Dave and I have known each other for about seven years. Dave and I worked together in my former school district. Dave's currently at Kaiga Heights as the Director of Instructional Technology. And we are excited and thrilled to have Dave come over as our new Director of Systems and Instructional Technology. And Dave, it's not official yet until these five folks vote on your contract, but I want to say welcome. We're excited that you're a Hurricane. I don't know that Mr. Evans and Mr. Young over there are going to talk to me for a couple of months, but we are excited that you're, you're a Hurricane and you're going to, got to get you the blue and gold gear. So, welcome and thank you. And Rob, and thank you for letting us have them too. So, we appreciate it. What I want to do now is talk a little bit about, review some of the information that we had from last board meeting. This will be a summary. I don't need to go into as much depth as we did last time, but I wanted to rehash and kind of, kind of discuss again what we've been doing. One of the things, since March of two thousand and twenty, I asked Sandy Neal, and her and I worked on projects that the district has completed since that time. We've had, we have grant, we have ESSER money and we have, and we have permanent improvement and general fund money that we've dedicated to some of these infrastructure improvements. And with our facility study that we, we had this year, we wanted to be able to show the board what we actually have accomplished in terms of projects since that March, that spring of two thousand and twenty. You can see here from a total infrastructure investment since March of twenty, we've, we've invested about six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars into district infrastructure in various areas. About four hundred and seventy thousand dollars of that was, was paid through grant and/or ESSER money. And the other hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars was, was charged out of our general fund permanent improvement money. Want to be able to differentiate both of those accounts for you. If you look at the bottom line there, you'll see the, the investment in terms of transportation, stadium complex, tree trimming, signage beautification, work put into the high school, work put into the general district infrastructure, and then there's that one-line item of other and athletics. And so, that's kind of the breakdown that we've had since two thousand and twenty. Moving forward, we still have things that we need to do to really kind of, kind of get up to base and address some of our needs in the district. We're still working on a gutter replacement. We're going to be purchasing a, a school bus, three school buses this, this year. We're tentatively, we'll get those somewhere around September, October, November because of delivery times. Hundred thirty-five thousand of that is, was, is grant money from Ohio Department of Education. So, that, actually, that three hundred thousand, that was an estimate. It's actually lower. You'll see this evening on the board agenda.
Two hundred eighty-three.
So, is it, what was it?
Two hundred eighty-three.
Two hundred eighty-three. Thank you, Mrs. A. Appreciate you always counting for me. I do. Track resurfacing, that actually went out to bid this week, and so, we're hoping to, we're hoping to get that project going and select a vendor in the next two to three weeks. Looking at the concession stand renovation project, we're working with, with our Athletic Booster Club, and they were, they were very thoughtful and kind to donate twenty thousand dollars towards that project. So, that'll begin this spring too. Looking at a, the Hurricane Alley, we definitely need to resurface that. Where Sandy is investigating whether or not we can do that all at once or should we do it in phases? We, we know that one half of that drive has a greater need than the other half. So, depending on the cost estimate, we may be doing that in phases. Continuing roof repairs, and really, there's nothing catastrophically wrong with our roofs. This is just general maintenance, so we do not have to, we don't run into any type of catastrophic needs. We have classroom furniture replacements. That is coming out of, of ESSER money. It's actually a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars. But again, some of the furniture that our kids are in now has been here since the early seventies, right? And that's, that's no criticism, but, but we want our kids to, to be able to have good furniture to help with the learning environment. And so, that's something we were starting to do. We should be done with the high school this summer. Half of the lower school this summer, and then we'll be able to fill in down the road, the other half of the, the lower school and, and fill in in other places. Carpeting, we want to get the auditorium and a couple of classrooms done this summer. And we have ongoing masonry repairs and vent work throughout the, throughout the campus. So, that's kind of a, the anticipated capital investments over the next, let's just say, year. Transportation updates. So, Mr. Singer, I know you and I talked about this specifically. I've updated the numbers a little bit since last time. These numbers are as of, of today. We, budget has not changed, four hundred and sixty-one thousand. We've spent about two hundred and ninety-two thousand. We've encumbered about a hundred and twenty-five of that, and we have another forty-three or so thousand unencumbered. We should be on budget easily for the end of the year, especially since, you know, we got about two, two and a half months to go before the end of the year. Facility study review. So, so in, in the fall, we, we approved a facility study. And this is just the first step of, of looking at our facilities. One of the things I think that are important for us to consider as we, we go down the road and as, as Sandy is working through her capital projects is we want to have an idea of what things we need to focus on. I don't have the ability to do that. I don't have the technical expertise to do that. We, we, we've worked with, we worked with G P D to, to do that study. The, the great thing about the study is it really told us what we already know. We know that the high school is in need of most of the renovation work compared to the rest of the district. Obviously, you have a new building that was built in two thousand and fifteen. What I asked G P to do is to provide a cost estimate with, of the renovation and potentially a new building comparison. Now, you got to remember, that's two thousand and twenty-two Monday, money. We are, we are working through a time where, where there are, there's labor shortages, there's supply shortages. And really, to, to be honest, all of these costs are probably escalated for about twenty, by about twenty-five percent based on what G P D told me. The great thing is we have no immediate needs, no structural needs, no emergency needs that we have to address immediately. But what this facility study will do is it will allow us to, as we progress through the years, identify areas to say, okay, we're going to work on this so that if we ever get to a point, if we ever get to a point where we need to renovate the high school or renovate the district, parts of the district, we're able to, we're able to do that methodically, logically, and so that we have an idea of what we want to do. You can see here, new construction cost, again, forty-seven million, renovation cost, twenty-four million. Again, these are two thousand and twenty-two numbers. If I put this same chart up in three, four years, going to be completely different. This is just an estimate of what it looks like right now. Obviously, we would never, we would, the only thing we would do with the auditorium would be a renovation. That would be my recommendation to the board. There's historical significance with the auditorium. I think that would be the route we would go with that. But again, this will, this is just a, a fact-finding piece so that as we go through the years, we can make good decisions on what our next projects are. You know, for example, we need to renovate high school bathrooms. Based on G P D's study, we know that's going to cost somewhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. So, let's say our next project is renovation of bathrooms. Colleen and I can work together with Sandy, with the board to say, okay, we're going to do first four bathrooms. First, here's the cost year one, year two. So, it's, it's, it's a comprehensive look in terms of, so that Colleen and I can budget, right? Because we have that capital outlay money we, we put to, we put aside every year. You know, once we're done with Hurricane Alley, what's next? So, those are some of the things we're looking at doing. Quick reminder of the, the five-year forecast, and this is going to get, first of all, do any questions in terms of the facility study, any of the transfer, anything like that? I don't want to, I don't want to rush through it. I don't, I don't want to stay up here for an hour either, but I don't want to rush through it either and want to give everybody an opportunity to ask questions.
I just think the only thing that should be stated is that we received, we requested that study. It was presented to us, but we have had no meetings. We've had no further discussions about what our next step is of new school renovations, anything. We've had this, but we've been dealing with other issues and we'll get to it.
And any, and then, to be honest with you, anything we do now and in the future is strictly internal, you know? So, the, 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 the facility study will help us drive our internal work before we even have the conversation outside. So, yeah, there, there's, this is strictly step one, fact-finding, and any type of conversation are years down the road for us. We're hoping to accomplish, let me make it say it this way. We're hoping to accomplish as much as we can prior to any type of big, big ask from the voters. That would be my, that would be my, I guess, the easiest way to say it. We want to, we want to accomplish as much internally with our current budgeting before we, we, we ask anything of our voters or our residents. Okay. Five-year forecast, and I'll ask Mrs. A. if she wants to step in here a little bit. Probably not, right, Mrs. A.? I know you, that's okay. Just kind of a reminder, and again, this is, this was back in November. This will change in, in, in May, but, but based on the November twenty-one five-year forecast, we're going to be looking at deficit spending in, in those fiscal years. We'll have a much more detailed, I don't want to get too much into this because it may change. You know, it's going to change when we get to May, so I don't want to get too deep into the weeds on the forecast. Here's what's not going to change. So, these are the, this is just a, a information for the board, for residents, for parents, for staff in terms of what we have coming up and what, in terms of a levy cycle. If you, and I tried to color code them. So, if you look at the first, the first line, avoiding a deficit, that's a renewal, that, the type of renewal. That will expire in, in December of twenty-nine. So, that needs to be renewed by calendar year twenty-nine. So, that's, that's way down the road. The next one is that the second line blue, that is the, the renew by calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. So, that is slated for renewal and has to pass by the end of calendar year twenty-three, right? And if, if that passes in, in calendar year twenty-three, we would be, we would continue receiving that money in calendar year, calendar year twenty-four. So, that, that's, that's the next one on the list. The third line, the, the second blue line here, but the third line, renew by calendar year twenty-seven. That was a seven-year avoiding deficit levy. And the, and when, when it says avoiding deficit, those are specific monetary amounts. So, no matter what the millage is, it will, it will always be that amount. So, my guess is that based on the current evaluation of a property, so as the evaluation goes up, the millage goes down because you always want to make sure you get that same amount. So, those are, those are truly, those will truly generate those, those amounts of, of money for the district. That third line there, you need to renew that by calendar year twenty-seven. And then the last line there, green, current expenses, that needs to be, and I can't see that, and that's terrible.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, thank you. That needs to be renewed by the end of calendar year twenty-five. So, that is the, the current life cycle of levies we have in the district. Any questions with that? As we go forward, I think it's, I think it's prudent that the, the board starts to think about what renewal levies and options we're going to present to residents in the near future. I've kind of laid this out as a kind of an A and a B. And again, this is conversational. This is, this is the second conversation we're having in terms of our levy cycle levy planning. Planning, option A, traditional, like you would, we would run a campaign, a renewal in November of twenty-two or May of twenty-three for that first renewal levy, that first levy there, avoiding a deficit in May of twenty-five, potentially a, that second one there. You would then go to November of twenty-six or May of twenty-seven for that avoiding deficit levy. And then, obviously, down the road, May of twenty-nine would be that last avoiding deficit. We, we do know that at some point, we anticipate, based on current five-year forecast, that, that we would potentially need new operating money, but also looking at, does, does that operating levy somehow tie into a permanent improvement levy to address some of the, the major renovation needs at the high school and, and around the district? That's a conversation down the road that the, the board has to determine what direction we're going. Based on the current five-year forecast, that's potentially when we're thinking new money permanent improvement levy. Okay? Second option would be, so we have an option to, to combine a couple of levies. And in, in doing so, what the, in combining a levy, we would reduce, we would reduce the number of asks to our voters. So, instead of going four times in, I'm sorry, three times in three to four years, we would potentially reduce that to two asks. Now, what does that mean? It really means no new money. It, it doesn't change, it doesn't change anything for our residents in terms of their taxes. It's no new money, no new increase. So, even combining those first two levies, and so, if I go back to this chart here, we would combine, potentially, we could combine those two avoiding deficit levies right there. In blue, excuse, thank you, in blue. You got my back. I know you do. Thank you. In blue. And we, that would go this November or next May, right? And that's an option. It's no new money. It's, it doesn't change, it doesn't change the residence tax bill. It just allows us that option of combining those two issues. We then move to May of twenty-five for the, the renewal levy there that has to pass by end of twenty, calendar year twenty-five. And then, we still have that one outside in, in May of twenty-nine that is still sticking out there. And again, we've talked about the potential new operating and then permanent improvement money for, for some renovations. So, those are, those are kind of the options. I'll, I truly will give it to Mrs. A. in terms of if she wants to add anything to it. But those are the way I see the options now. I think, I think in the next couple of months, I would recommend having some more in-depth conversations. You know, I know we do have Mr. Manilov coming at our April fifth board meeting. I would, I would say that that's going to be a great time to really ask legal counsel, what, what are the implications? And, and make sure that he answers all the board's questions. If we would go in November for a renewal levy, whatever that looks like, whether it's a combo or a singular issue, we probably have to pass resolutions sometime in June-ish to be, to be safe because we want to make sure that that's, that's all certified with the county by July, August, which would allow us to, which will allow us to do a November issue. And obviously, there's options for, but remember, we still, we still are obligated to passing the fir, the second line there by calendar year of twenty-three. So, even going in November of twenty-two, we still have until the following November to try to pass that issue. Okay? Some next steps I would, I would ask that, that we, again, we talk at the April fifth board meeting a little bit. And that, and my recommendation, that'll just be a business meeting only. I won't have items for, for passage. I just want to make sure we're focused on those conversations. Give you a chance to talk with Rick. Colleen will have, obviously, I think, more information, hopefully, with regards to the five-year forecast and go from there. But, but I'd like to, again, and we have the town hall the next day. Probably present some of that information for whoever shows up on, at that town hall. Going to livestream that too, so people can, can watch virtually. And then hopefully make a, a recommendation at some point in May or June so we can get the, whatever it looks like. Again, if we, if we go in November, we're probably going to need to make that recommendation, pass those resolutions. I would like before the end of the school year, I think, from a planning standpoint, if we could, we could decide, are we going to go in November or if we're going to wait till, with May? I think that would be helpful in terms of planning for the district. No, no, please.
Can you go back to the other side where the, the planning B is? I just wanted to show where the combination is, where the blue, when you add up the two. I just wanted to show where the combination is, where the blue, when you add up the two levies. If we decide to go the route to do the combination, I wanted to point out the millage amount. Because if you add the millage amount that's current, it's higher than the eleven-point-eight-nine, that could potentially be on there if we go in November. And that's just because the property taxes increased and the mil, that makes the millage go down to still get that same dollar amount. So I just kinda wanted to throw that out there, if you notice, if you add up the two numbers and they weren't the same, that's why, is because of the property taxes were not, millage goes down to give us that same dollar amount.
Any questions, Ms. Barczak, or make a question? Well, thank you, that is, that is my report for this evening, alright.
Thank you, now onto our treasures report, Mrs. A.
Thank you, I have a few things on the agenda, I have financial statements for approval, that'll be for the month of February. I also have the local government services engagement on here for renewal, what that is, is a state requirement that has to be completed annually. It's a GAAP conversion, generally accepted accounting principles that have to be done every year. Um, this year, the prices did go up, last year, it was not to exceed twelve thousand dollars, this year, it's not to exceed twelve thousand sixty dollars. So I do wanna say that did go up, but in the last three years, I look, we haven't even reached close to that amount, so, wanted to point that out though. And then I also have the transfer of the funds on here to the permanent improvement fund, I recommend doing the transfer from the general fund to the PI fund. Just so one, we could have better tracking of the funds, but also to avoid going over our budget, if the amount does go over, then there'll be another resolution to put another transfer on. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Clark, did you wanna go over the agenda items now or wait till after the board?
It's up to the board, I, I can do, I can do, I, I, we don't have a lot of, I mean, and I can wait unless, unless you want me to go over them now.
Yeah, you can go over them now.
That's fine.
Before you start, Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, Ella She, what's the last year of your contract, the auditor of state?
So, the local government service section, we do for the GAAP conversion, we just do, f, annually, we'll renew it. For the auditor of state to actually do our GAAP, or to actually do our audit. Yes, we just sign on for another five years for the CPA firm to do it, Charles E. Harris. But then after that, we maxed out of going to an IPA, which is independent, um, public accounting firm, and then the state has to come back and audit us.
That's what I, that's what I asked. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ms. Barczak, I'll start on page three then of the agenda, we'll just review that very quickly.
Okay.
Um, item four-point-one is the second reading approval of the bylaws that we reviewed, um, on March first. Item four-point-two is an agreement with, uh, the floor king to, um. Replace carpet in our auditorium and two classrooms for a total of, of that amount, and that will come out of S R two, S R three grant money. Item four-point-three, approval of roofing repairs, um, originally in the week, I had a, Sandy had given me a higher quote. She readjusted based on some of her draw, her things, and so that came in less, um, that will also come out of grant money, um, for, for the district. Which may allow us to, to address another roof earlier than we want to, so that, that potentially is a good thing. Um, four-point-four, approval of, uh, Cardinal Bus Sales, purchase of three school buses. Um, for two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand and change, um, of which a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars will come out of grant money. So, we will pay for the, the buses and then will be reimbursed through, through Mrs. A's process. Item four, excuse me, item five-point-one, approval of administrative contract, uh, Mr. Dave Wallace, Director of Systems. And Instructional Technology, uh, that is a, a July one start date typically. Our administrative contracts will start, would start on eight-one, um, but this might be a good opportunity to, to bring in Mr. Wallace, uh, earlier. Because it's gonna be a busy summer, so we would, we, we wanna take advantage of that. Um, item, so in the contract, his year one is a thirteen-month. Count, con, salary as opposed to a twelve-month, so just a little differentiation there. Five-point-two is the approval of transition, uh, days for Mr. Wallace. Um, so after board approval, he can start coming in the district, meeting with staff, meeting with Mr. Black, kind of assessing things. And again, it's, it's five days, it's not gonna, it's not a lot, but it'll allow him to at least get a feel for things prior to July one. Um, item five-point-three, classified unpaid leave of absence approval. Item five-point-four, amending a resolution of a coaching assignment, um, for Mr. Hanlon to go from head varsity softball coach. Back to assistant varsity baseball coach. Um, item five-point-five, a coaching resignation. Item five-point-six, a classified resignation, and those are my items. Ms. Barczak, any questions on my items?
I, I do have a question, Dr. Ted, on five-one administrative contract, uh, and this is kinda, segues into Colleen or Treasure. Uh, so, this is a thirteen-month contract, is, is contract paid for by general fund? Combination of general fund and S R funds?
His, his, c, his contract for year, for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four will be paid out of S R funds. Twenty-four, twenty-five, it'll, it'll go back to the general fund.
Okay.
Again. And that's currently the way it is now, I mean, so that's, that's the way it is now, so we're paying, so our, our contract with Neonet currently, it's the same thing, it's coming out of S R funds. So it's not gonna change how we've done things, if Mr. Taylor was here, it would've been the same thing.
Anyone else? Now on to board members and board committee reports, and we're gonna start with Mr. Rocky Neal tonight.
Thank you, Madam President, I also be enjoying the seventy-degree weather, not bad, fresh air. Uh, I, I have the technology committee, I do not have a report at this time, it's in, in the near future, I will.
Could use one of those transition days.
Exactly, you can have one of those. Uh, like the, good luck to all the spring sports people, one of my committees is the legislative committee. And, uh, I'm gonna steal some of Mr. Singer's thunder here, uh, he recently went to OSBA last week, right? For, uh, some OSBA training and that type of stuff, so he sent out to all of us a resolution. Add parental right to know plank and the twenty-two Ohio School Board Association Legislative Platform. I've, being on the legislative committee, I've read, I've read through this a couple of times. Um, and I believe, I would say ninety percent of it, we already do, there's a good chance. There's some of it we need to add, so my recommendation to the board, there's some O R Cs that I would like to recapture and look over again on this. And my recommendation to the board is we have a little meeting about it, or have a little work session on it.
So, so we could, um, since the April fifth board meeting is strictly a work session, we have Mr. Maniloff coming in. We could, we could, we could add it to that, or we could wait till the first meeting of May. To, to strictly have that conversation, uh, so it's, it's, it's whatever the board decides on that one, but. But I, I'm gonna try to, to ma, I'm gonna, Colleen and I are gonna try to make our first meetings of the month.
All work sessions.
All work sessions, so we don't have to address, we don't have to vote on issues and try to move all our issues and all of our motions to business, specific business, to the second meeting, so.
For those of us who've had Mr. Maniloff in a meeting, he's about the only guy we could have at a meeting, you know, time-wise. He likes to chat, so I think we're gonna have to move that to May, but I think it was, something we need to discuss as a board, that's my opinion.
If I can add something?
Sure.
No, absolutely.
Uh, just wanna add to that, so basically, what this is a resolution that goes to OSBA. Ohio, uh, School Board Association, they're our trade group, uh, they represent us, uh, as lobbyists to the, uh, State Assembly and to the governor's office. So, what was interesting was when we did some research, uh, there's very little on the plank or. Some people call it platform or policy from OSBA about parental rights. And when I talk about parental rights, I'm talking about a parent's right to know what the curriculum is that's being taught. Now, there's some duplication of effort in the House Assembly, one thirty-four, I'll discuss a little more in my report, but. Uh, we have until the end of May to pass this resolution. What's, what we're doing here is asking all the school board districts to pass this resolution, and this goes to Columbus, to OSBA. To add this to the plank or to the platform, so at the Capitol Conference in, in November, this is added to the, to the platform, the agenda. That we all vote on as delegates in November. So, the, the key is if we have enough resolutions, they'll add this to their agenda, and this requires the lobby group for OSBA. To push legislators, uh, not only from our end, but from their official lobby group. To adapt this kind of language that offers parental rights to every parent of a student in a public or charter school. So, uh, there's a House Bill five-twenty-nine that addresses some of this. And, but this is us telling our trade group that we wanna see that our parents, the, the parents of our students. Have a rights to review the curriculum, whether it's college credit plus, uh, or something that's taught in-house. Uh, any, any kind of distribution, any kind of surveys, anything that a child is required to do in the classroom. Uh, that, that parents will have remedy to either opt in or opt out.
So will you give us some information before the May fifth, if you can find all that?
Yeah.
Is it May, too far? Do, do you, we can, we put it up for the May meeting?
The deadline is end of May.
Right.
So we can do it in the meeting this morning?
We can discuss it at a work session.
Actually, this is a draft copy.
Okay.
This was drafted by Matt Marklin.
Gotcha.
So you know, uh, Matt, Matt, uh, said that there's a lot of holes in the platform of OSBA. That, again, understand, it might be an error of omission, it might be intentional. That there are people who don't want parents to have a right to, to see what their kids are, are being taught.
So we have a board. We have a work session on May third.
Okay.
And then we have a, uh, two weeks later seventeen, we have a regular.
So that'll, that'll give us time to work on it.
We could, we could have the work session and then vote on the seventeenth, are you okay with that?
That's fine, and, and just for everybody's education, for the board, we have very strong policies that, that are very transparent. Uh, foreign board policies and parental, parental rights, but some more districts do not.
Our current policies, which is.
Current policies, yeah, so this isn't, that's so much for our compliance, but for our encouragement for other school board districts to adopt. You know, this plank, this platform.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Minister Singer, I, I do believe we, we do it the right way, and, and again, I, you know. Any parent, community member ever has a question about what we do, how we do it, you know, we, we, we follow state standards, but again, we're, we're, we're very. I'm very open to administration, very open to, to making sure we have a good relationship with our families.
As long as you follow the right procedure. Well, this, and this, you know, if, if enough of these districts sign on to this, there's enough momentum, it'll te, tell the OSBA, our trade group. Basically, to lobby the legislators to pass House Bill five-twenty-nine, which I'll talk about in my report.
Alright, well, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I'll add it as a, for the May, I'll add it as an item for the May third.
Or you continue, Mr. Singer, do you wanna say, because of the acronyms, most of the public don't know what OSBA is? So what is OSBA, so people who don't, you know, they don't?
That's a great, that's a great question, OSBA is the Ohio School Board Association. And they represent, uh, the board, school boards, the, the districts, not the individual members, but the school boards across Ohio. And that's our trade group, they're responsible for helping us administer our school board districts. They're also responsible for, you know, any kind of policy changes, uh, Neola, which is, again, it's a, it's a legal. Site for board members to refer to, when we said board policies, it's just, so basically, what we wanna do is promote advocacy for parents. To have rights as far as, you know, what the children are being taught, you know, we're not dictating what's, what they're being taught. It's just, we wanna make sure the parents have a right to know what it is that they're being taught, and the ability to opt in or opt out.
Mr. Singer, just as a question of, of, i- if you could email me the, if you know, the districts that are, other districts that are also considering this resolution. I would appreciate that, if you could do that, just so I could have some context too.
Yeah, that's why this is a draft, because right now, we're trying to get feedback from, because the school boards are adopting this. So we have until the end of May to do this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Alrighty, uh, that's the end of my legislative committee at this moment, I'm gonna go on to my Polaris Committee. Um, three young ladies from Strongsville, got an aspire nursing program, uh, with the Cleveland Clinic. I'd wanna say the dollar amount, not their scholarship, but the program's like a ten-million-dollar program, it's, it's, it's crazy. They also, Polaris is also adding a vet tech program, I think I might take that one up, as many dogs as I have. I can save a couple of dollars. And then, uh, right, in, da-da-da-da, and, and then we just talked about, same thing that goes on here, there's increased in cost supplies. They use a little more supplies, you're a little more business oriented, so there's an increase in a lot of delivery supplies and the supply chain and all that we speak about. Um, the next meeting's gonna be April twelfth at six o'clock, you know why? They have a dinner.
Oh, oh, wow, shocking.
Wait, I wanna know what's on the menu.
I don't either, there's a way to save money, if you cut the dinners out.
Yeah, they can.
And then we have a meeting at seven o'clock right after, so, just so everybody knows. I hate to say this, but when you go there, there's this platform just over there, and there's seven of us board members. And last week, there was popcorn, fry, fried cake, doughnuts when I leave, and then there's this surprise box, so what I do. Is I take a picture of it and I send it to everybody when I leave there. So then I did, and then the next morning, the surprise box, I didn't open until I got the coffee started for the morning. There were.
You sent the picture of popcorn real quick though.
Same, what else was in there, kolachkis and peanut butter cookie, chocolate chip cookie, oatmeal raisin, I hated it, it was terrible, they were terrible. So anyway.
And he doesn't share.
And he doesn't.
We definitely need to redo the track, cause Rocky's gonna get fat. Get fat, I am already there, so anyway, that is the end of my report.
For the record, Mrs. A won't let me buy any of that stuff for the board.
Now on to Mr. Rick Singer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first thing I wanna say, I'd like to, um, please ex- extend a prayer to all of our Ukrainian-American friends and family members. Uh, Brooklyn, Lake Parma, and some of the surrounding suburbs, uh, we have a lot of family over there, myself included, we pray for their safety. And, uh, that, uh, whatever we can do to, to support Ukraine against Russia would be, uh, again, prayerful, Slava, Ukrainian. Um, I wanna segue off, uh, I don't wanna go through all this, these House bills from the meeting ahead of Columbus.
Thank you.
But, but something that is, um, I'm gonna just kinda gloss over, H B, uh, fifty-one. Uh, which allows us to continue doing Zoom meetings, but I think this one's gonna, I'm not sure if it's gonna go through or not, cause I'm sure it's challenged.
It, for the, yeah, it's passed already.
That's a pass.
So we have that option, if.
We have the option to go Zoom.
Yeah, we do.
Is that, is this time?
Can we vote on Zoom?
Yes, we have, we have the ability to go back to meetings via Zoom, so if, you know, we met the, the posting timelines and we could, we could meet. Via Zoom, as long as the public had access to those meetings.
Yeah, they have access and, and, uh, and, uh, for the teleconferencing.
Yes.
Uh, and it has to be declared as an emergency as well, you know, so I think the notice, notification has to be, uh, an emergency. Uh, H B ninety-nine, uh, that goes in with, uh, allowing certain trained individuals within a school safety zone. To have an armed, a teacher, peace officer, uh, but, uh, it imposes training requirements. Safety requirements for any school board body, I'm not sure where this one is, but I think it was still in committee.
Yeah.
Uh, to, uh, H B one-twenty-six, uh, this one's kinda curious, I'm, I'm gonna ask Colleen if, if she'd be so kind to do a little bit more research on this. But this modifies, uh, complaints for valuation of real estate properties, which can affect Brooklyn, obviously, you know, we're so dependent on valuations.
Yeah, that has, um, that's, that's in committee or it's been buried, so right now, I mean.
Still in committee.
Yeah, it's in still committee, so right now, I don't, I, I haven't heard that.
They changed the procedure to it, that's what, it's not as much back and forth.
Mr. Seaton and I have been exchanging emails, so I'm, I'm keeping up to date, and I'll definitely let the board be aware of something that's changed.
The, the big, the big thing with one-twenty-six would have been for us to contest anything now, we would have to, with one-twenty-six, we would have to then.
we would have to, with 126, we would have to then officially do that through resolution, where we, where we do not have to do that now, so right now, I believe, House Bill 126 is either buried or somewhere in committee.
Yeah, there's a lot of opposition.
Yeah.
Both by OSBA and OASB, I think, and the Treasurers Group, I think the Ohio Municipal League, uh, pan, you know.
And I, I would agree, I don't, I, House 126 would not be beneficial for us as a school district.
The biggie in the state of Ohio is HB 290, to express the intent of the General Assembly to establish a new school funding format, formula that allows families to choose the option for all computed funding amounts associated with student's education, to file them to the public and non-public schools they, they attend. It, a lot of people have heard of the Backpack Bill, this is what that says. So, the funding follows a student, whether the student is a public school student, private school student, even home school student. So, there's a lawsuit now by several school board districts that have been, have been filed to make this bill unconstitutional by the courts, and it impacts, it can, can impact, I'm not sure, sure for sure, if it will impact our district foundation payments.
It, it would.
But I suspect, I suspect.
Taking money away, I think they are. Yeah, we, and again, I, I would not be in favor of that one either.
Yeah, when I read through the resolution, it, it specifically says that, let's see, that revised code can be amended, enacted, or repealed to create a thorough and efficient statewide foundation funding for formula. So, our current formula can be attacked and repealed, or changed or modified. HB 327, basically, this is part of the, of this resolution that I asked you, right now, it's, it's stuck in committee, and this basically stops school districts, community school stem school state agencies from teaching, advocating, or promoting divisive concepts. So, it goes through a whole litany here of sex, gender, race, identity, identification, it goes through the whole litany of this, and this is, this is right now stuck in, in the House Assembly. So, that's pretty much all I have, I just wanted to share this with you. When I went down to Columbus, 327, the Backpack, the Hot Backpack Bill, those are the hot issues, obviously, anything to do with funding should be hot issue, but my last comment is, I was told by several of the attorneys who work in lobbyists at OSBA that the Cup Patterson formula may be gone.
Next year.
Uh, next year. Because they've both been term limited out, and there's nobody that's kind of rooting for Brooklyn. You know, we fought hard to get all that formula reconfigured, and so, we might be back, again, working with Jamie Calendar, who's the state rep, who's kind of taking on the call, but to, to help support, to keep this Cup Patterson bill alive, and, but before you ask the question, the Cup Patterson bill is, is again, for a lot of people don't know, Brooklyn is considered a rich school board district. Excuse me while I laugh. So, you know, even though we have 50% reduced lunch, and our, I think our median income is like $47,000 in Brooklyn, and we're just a small school, the fact that we sit on a lot of industrial, commercial, residential property, all four square miles of us, makes us a rich district, just, just a few of them in the state, but the funding formula is very unfair in Brooklyn, was unfair, and I think we're getting more money now because of the Cup Patterson.
Correct, so that, sorry.
So, let's get, I'm glad you checked.
Yeah, so you're right.
How much I, more, I, I don't know offhand.
So, they're doing a phase-in, so now they're doing more of a local capacity, and they look at the, the property taxes, they look at the, the average, median income of the, the residents. So, Brooklyn actually, because of this new fair school funding, received more money. Now, they were doing a phase-in, so we only saw about one-sixth of that amount. After, um, next year, we're gonna see, I don't want to misquote something, but we're gonna see a little bit more next year. If they take it away, then we're gonna, I don't know what formula they're gonna use, but, so yes, I want to say, without misquoting, we did receive money, I want to say a total of about $329,000, but please don't quote me on that, but they were phased in, so we didn't see that much this year, we'll see a little bit more next year, but then, when the new funding formula comes out, if they have a new one, I, I don't know what that will look like, but, so yes, we did win out in this formula.
This is why our levies are so important, because, you know, basically, we're paying the freight for our children's education here, and as much as people talk about lottery money, and state money, and everything else, we don't get as much as we probably should be getting. I, I call our fair share, so, right now, it looks like we will be for a little while longer, but, uh, once that expires, and those are the next funding sessions, uh, we're gonna be fighting again, probably. End of report, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Singer. Now, onto Ms. Kelly Kroll.
Thank you. First, I would like to congratulate Sophia Collins on her accomplishments at the most recent wrestling tournament, and also wish her the best of luck as she enlists in the United States Navy. Since my last report, I volunteered at Night at the Races on February 26th, and it was a fun event, it's always a fun time, even when you're working, but I don't think people truly know what goes on behind the scenes when planning an event like that. It's months of preparation, and shopping, and putting in permits, calling and confirming donations, and finding volunteers, and tracking tickets and money, so, a huge shout-out and thank you to the Athletic Boosters and the planning committee, and also to their families who sacrificed living space, and bedroom space, and fridge space, for all the stockpiling of the paper products, and the supplies, and pork. I also volunteered at the Total last Friday, and again, it's always a fun time with my friends, the Drama Club put on a nice show, and it was wonderful to see so many people come out, um, and enjoy the production. I would like to encourage parents to get involved and attend the booster meetings and volunteer. I personally always found it fulfilling, and it keeps my friends and I out of trouble. Athletic booster meetings are the first Monday of the month at 6:30, music booster meetings are the fourth Tuesday of the month at 7:00, and PTA is typically the third Thursday of the month at 6:00, and all are welcome. Meetings are rarely more than an hour, and it's a great way to stay informed on how you can help, and know where fundraising dollars are going. This is just a quick note, because I know it doesn't only affect me, but other people I know, the Memphis Bridge will be westbound only for six months, beginning April 1st, and the detour for eastbound traffic is Bel Air 230 to Brook Park to Tiedemann.
Ooh.
Yeah, with gas going up, that's kind of.
Yeah.
Um, and then just some upcoming events is next week, the band is tra, traveling to, next week, the band is traveling to Disney, so good luck to them, and enjoy the march down Main Street, it's quite a sight watching from the entrance and seeing our Hurricanes come up with Cinderella's Castle in the background. April 30th is the Taste of Brooklyn at La Villa Banquet Center at 7:00. The last one was in 2019, and the jazz band is always amazing, um, those kids are like the cream of the crop, and Mr. Sullivan even joins in on the saxophone. I think tickets are $20 ahead of time, and $25 at the door. And then, May 30th is the Memorial Day Parade, the last one was in 2019, and coming from a big military family, I'm glad this event will be held, and I think it's important that we'll be honoring those that died while serving, and that's my report.
Ms. Kroll, can I, to mention, if, if people are interested in Taste of Brooklyn, we're solid in the board office, so if they want to staff up, they can get tickets there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Now, onto Mr. Rob Slattery.
Thank you. I'm on the Facilities Committee, obviously, the past meetings, we've talked about the roofwork going on, the track resurfacing, concession stand upgrades, uh, that are being helped by the Athletic Boosters with their donation, um, so, we've got a lot of things going on, we'll give updates as, as they move along. The Rec Board meeting, we had it scheduled for this, this next Monday, but due to some scheduling conflicts, it's been canceled, it'll be pushed, we'll have one in April. So, we'll get all that, all the information, Mr. Abruzzi runs that, and does quite well. The musical, I worked as an usher on Saturday, these kids are amazing, I had the lead in the play, or the musical, she's in the sixth grade, I believe, so hopefully, we've got her for a long time, uh, she stays engaged, and more kids get involved, but they're, they're pretty brave, there's no way I would've got up on stage and tried to do anything like that when I was here, so, um, it, it's pretty neat to see that. Power of the Pen, I can speak, my daughter was in Power of the Pen when she was in, I think freshman, sophomore year she did. What it is, it's a writing competition, for anybody that doesn't know, they give you a prompt, they send you into a room, and then you have to go in there, and these kids come out, it's like they went to battle, they come in, they're, they're just dragging, they're just exhausted afterwards, so it's kind of, uh, you know, it sounds like an easy thing to do, but it's not at all, so. The artwork, there was probably, what, 15, 20 different pieces of artwork that were in the contest. Just amazing, another talent, another, another great thing we have. Night at the Races, uh, there was 400-plus people there, over 50 baskets, and, I mean, i- if you went there and didn't have a good time, we didn't win anything, but we had a good time. Uh, and then, the next event is the golf outing for you guys, so, uh, we'll look for flyers for that. And the furniture, that's one of the desks over in the, that other office.
Yes, yes.
I actually sat in it, the, the arm, like, the desk part swings around, and I actually fit in it, and it was pretty sturdy, so those things should last a while, so we're gonna get our money's worth out of those. So, uh, other than that, I have nothing, I will pass it on.
Just like, real quick, with regards to some of the, the track improvements, at some point late spring, during the summer, the, the track will not be accessible to the community because of all those things happening. So, just informate, you know, FYI, we'll post that on the website, we'll post signs out at the stadium, but my anticipation is sometime after grad, after graduation, early June, mid-June, we're gonna be shutting down the track, so that they can work on, get that project on, so just kind of the FYI.
And since, since you brought it up, just so you know, I don't know if anybody's reached out to you, that the turnstile was broke, broken, or something was unlocked, and there, some kids were in there messing around playing, I don't know if it's been fixed or something.
Yeah, the turnstile's, the turnstile's locked all the time, um, they actually had this conversation with Sandy today, it's the, the, it's open Monday through Friday, from, let's just say, 7:00 AM until, until it gets dark, um, and, yeah, kids jump the fence.
Okay. My, Dr. Polaris took a lot of my thunder for student achievement, you just did that whole, like, presentation, pictures and all, I mean, well, there you go, I couldn't say anything more eloquent than that. The artwork was amazing, I do, you know, I think, and then the kids with the congratulations with Matilda, and all of our winter sports athletes, and then I know our spring athletes are getting ready, even though, spring, it's 70 degrees now, but I'm sure when those baseball players are out there, it'll be a nice brisk 25, it will be, I'm sure it will be, but come out and support our teams, um, and congratulations to all the kids who are working so hard to get ready for our track, for our spring, for all of our spring events and our spring, um, sports. I know Mr. Singer brought up at our last meeting about the open checkbook, Ms., Mrs. A, what would be our next step to do?
So, I've reached out to the state treasurer to see what our next step is, so we can start putting, uh, putting that on our website.
Okay, so then, what, do you have to, do we have to, like, do the software apply? Would you have to, like, what is it?
So, I don't know, because he hasn't got it back to me yet.
Oh, okay.
But we are already on the state software, so I believe it would just be an easy transition that I would upload the documents and put it on there.
Okay.
But I don't want him to speak until, like, until he gets back to us, but.
Yeah.
But I will definitely inform the board, and I have more questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, maybe a question or suggestion, is there a way, potentially, that we could get maybe a demo of what that looks like, do it at work, just I want, I want, I would like the board to be aware of what all entails, something like this, and so that we, we're all on the same page moving forward, and again, they, I don't know that we need to have anybody come in and do it, but I would, I would like a little bit more.
Right, yeah, so you mean the process of, like, actually uploading, because right now, you could go on the OhioCheckbook.com, I believe is the website, and you could see other districts that already participate in that, and all of all their, their financials or checks, everything that they do, so, if you, the process of actually, for us to upload the information.
Well, I just want everybody to be aware of what it, what it entails.
Okay, sure.
That, that's, I, before we jump into that, just.
Definitely.
Make sure everybody has the same information moving forward.
Can you explain what that is, so, actually now, what is the open checkbook, what it is for the community?
So, what it is really for transparency, so, more than just school districts can do it, but it's just everything that's, that comes out of our financial system, we could upload, and all the vendors that we pay, all the checks that we cut, it's just pretty much an open book, checkbook transparency.
Thank you so much. And, as always, my phone number is 216-406-4304, if anyone would like to speak to me about any school related issues, they can always give me a call. And now, we're going on to the reading of minutes and approval of financial statements, and tonight's reader is Mr. Rocky Neal.
Thank you. Resolved at the Minutes, the Board of Education meeting be adopted and all action taken by the Board of Education, and said meeting is hereby reaffirmed and approved.
Can I have a motion, please?
Sure.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck?
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the financial statements of receipts and expenditures for the month of February, including all purchase orders paid in all then-announced statements for the month, uh, month of as submitted.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Do we need to have the month put in there, or is it okay that we just leave it like that? Do we have to specify?
I think I just leave it like that because it has on the month underneath it, but I could, I could definitely add that if you would like.
It has the PDF on there, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck?
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the second reading adoption of the following board policies as noted.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Have a second, questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck?
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby authorize superintendent to enter into an agreement with D. Floor King to replace carpet in the auditorium in various classrooms, 151, room 151 slash room 160 in Brooklyn High School, per the attached quote, to be purchased out of S.R. 2, S.R. 3 grants in the amount of $36,321.52.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Mrs. Barcheck, just a quick note, that on the quote that's attached, you'll see, you'll see other rooms that were quoted, so, so what Sandy did is she, we, we walked the facility, got kind of a, of what everything would look like, but on that quote, it's only for those three specific areas.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just happy that we're, we're using a, a business in the city, and he's actually an alumni of the school, so I think that's even an extra bonus.
They did our project extra.
Yeah, he did the carpet in this room.
He did, yeah.
Anyone else? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck?
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby authorize superintendent to enter into an agreement with professional roofing service to perform roof repairs in the areas listed in the attachment for the 21-22 school year out of the S.R. 3 grant in the amount of $42,900.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck?
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby authorize superintendent to enter into an agreement with Cardinal Bus Sales and Service for the purchase of
with Cardinal Bus Sales and Service for the purchase of three school buses, per the attached quote, in the amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eleven, of which one hundred and thirty-five thousand will be provided by the state, by the approved school bus purchase program grant on file in the treasurer's office.
Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Can I have a second, questions, comments?
Good question. Where it says service as well, obviously they're gonna be under warranty, uh, where do we have to take those, is it a local?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that, we, we have, um, you know, Mr. Matt, Matt, our mechanic doesn't work, but he, we use different vendors, so, yeah. I don't know the specific, I can find out, Mr. Singer.
I, I just want.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the attached administrative contracts, effective July first, twenty twenty-two through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, for, for David Wallace, Director of Systems and Instruction Technology contingent upon successful completion of background checks and then credentialing.
Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes. Welcome to Brooklyn.
Congratulations. Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves five days, forty hours of transition for David Wallace at the daily rate of three fourteen eighteen, per day he've, effective March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves two days of unpaid leave for Betty Jagary, playground monitor effective March twenty-four, twen- and twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby amends Resolution twenty-two dash zero two dash zero seven one to reflect the change in Timothy Hanlon's, Timothy Hanlon from head varsity softball coach to assistant varsity baseball coach.
Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Question. Yeah, explain to me what's going on, but, but after that.
We don't have enough girls for a softball team.
Oh.
And so, uh, Mr. Hanlon, uh, took over girls softball for us. We have, we have higher numbers in baseball, and so Mr. Hanlon has agreed to go back as assistant varsity, um, baseball. So now we'll have five coaches with our boys, um, and, uh, Nicola Kunith, who was our assistant varsity softball, won't be coaching with us.
Thank you.
And that's, that's the, one of the things that I think with Mr. Abruzzi and, and, and the city, what he's doing with our youth programs will directly benefit us in the near future, so we're, we're hopeful that we can get that team back in the near future. Yeah.
And that supplemental is less than for the assistant varsity baseball.
It is, Mrs. Barcheck, it is, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approved the coaching supplemental resignation for Mary Kraus Maline, head varsity, head varsity boys soccer, effective immediately.
Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the resignation of Samantha Dayton, preschool classroom assistant effective at the, the end of the day, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves engagement of local government services, LGS, with the Auditor of State to prepare the GA- GAAP financial statements for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two not to exceed twelve thousand and sixty dollars.
Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved at the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education and hereby approves transfer of funds from the General Fund zero zero one to the Permanent Improvement Fund zero zero three in the amount of fifty thousand for the concession stand pavilion renovation and stadium improvements.
Can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll, yes. Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Slattery.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes. Okay, discussion of board resolution to support additional parental rights to no plank to the twenty twenty-two OSBA legislation platform. I know we discussed that earlier, does anyone have anything else they want to say right now?
I'll, I'll have to sort of point of business on May third.
Okay.
Okay. The day is May third, we're gonna look at?
Yeah, that'll be our work session on, yeah, it'll be our work session.
All right, and then maybe if we have Mr. Marklin, he can explain some of the, the.
Uh, yeah, I'll have a conversation with him ahead of time, try to do a summary of what's going on.
And then have him available for us there, so, you said he was the one that wrote it?
Yeah.